Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the September 23, 2019 Board of Commissioners special call meeting and work session. At this work session, there will be no motions, no votes, and all concerning information as presented. And the very first presentation will be done by Dr. Roger Tutterow from Kennesaw State University, who will present information on the 2018 annual pension report. And our very own Bill Wolkman will be in the room if you have any questions along with Dr. Tutterow, please. Good to have you again, sir.
As we have in the past, we come on an annual basis to report on the status of the Cobb County Employee Retirement Plan. I am joined today by my friends, Bill and Tony and Virgil. Sheriff Warren is, of course, the fifth member of our board, and he is hopefully able to make it later, but he had a pretty busy agenda. So again, what I thought we'd do is take just a couple of minutes to kind of walk through a prepared presentation that updates you on the essence of our read, our collective view of the plan, and then take any questions at the leisure of the commissioners. So we start off by, we've already gone through the composition of the actual pension board. Our dear friend Alan Wright is here from UBS Financial Services, who is our investment advisor, so he helps us in the selection of the funds that go into the pension plan. Our master trustee is, of course, SunTrust Bank. Our actuary, which meets with us about half of our meetings, is Kavanaugh McDonald Consulting, and then the law firm of Troutman Sanders provides us guidance on legal matters. The charge to our board, and I think this is an important part of our presentation, is that we are responsible for the selection and retention of investment managers and as a custodian for the assets of the plan. So our charge is to manage the, invest the assets in a prudent manager, in a prudent manner, so that safety of the principal is preserved. And I think we all take very seriously our fiduciary duty to the retirees, the future retirees of Cobb County. Historically, we have had a traditional defined benefit plan that since 1998 has allowed a service factor of two and a half percent and an employee contribution rate of 7.75. The employee contribution rate has increased by a quarter point, or will do so until it reaches 8.75 in 2023. But as you notice from this chart, as we have worked our way through time, we are seeing the number of active participants in the defined benefit program to go down as people move from being current employees to being retirees. In fact, in 2017, we actually reached the point where we had more retirees in the traditional plan than we did current active employees. Beginning in 2010, we moved to a hybrid plan where the service factor drops from two and a half percent to 1 percent, and the employee contribution drops to 3 percent. That, of course, is to give us parity, since they're only receiving a 1 percent service factor, their contribution should be roughly 40 percent of what the contribution on the traditional plan would have been. We also allow for a defined, a defined contribution in the hybrid plan by making a voluntary contribution to the 457. I think on the, on the board, we always try to encourage the management of the county to have our employees respect how important it is that they contribute to the voluntary 457. So what has been the long-term trend in terms of traditional funding? Well, if we go look back over about the last 23 years, we see what we discussed last year, which was in 1998, the funding percentage dropped from being about 95 percent funded to about 70 percent funded. And that, of course, was due to a change in the years, the service factor per year in the traditional program. We also saw some reduction of the percentage funded between 2005 and 2008, and it has been relatively steady since then. If we look just over the most recent years, you would see that the funded ratio spiked in 2010 and kind of moved back down a little bit. The annual percentage changes, again, remains positive, but it does remind us of the volatility that we have in any plan where such a significant percentage of the assets are invested in the equity market and, of course, mark-to-market every year. We also, as part of our oversight, bring in experience studies, which look at the actual retirement behavior and mortality behavior of the retirees of Cobb County. And although we're thrilled with the fact that we're getting longer mortality of our retirees, that has an adverse effect upon how well-funded the pension plan is, because the longer our employees live, quite candidly, the more benefits they're going to absorb. So one of the things that is going into our report today is that we have incorporated the most recent experience study to reflect those continuous changes we see in the behavior and mortality of retirees and workers. And so, for 2018, the actuarially assumed annual percentage change was 7.5. The actual performance of the assets last year was a minus 6.15. Now, understand that these, this is mark-to-market at the end of the year, and if you recall, in 2018, we had a very bad last couple of months. If you were to look at the performance of the equity market for the first eight months of 2019, we have more than made up the drop we had late last year. But again, you've got to do more than break even over a period. You've got to be having your total portfolio go up seven and a half percent if we're going to stay in line with the actuarial assumptions. So for the third, for the 12 months ending in June of, June 30, 2019, our three-year performance was 10.35. The five and seven years were 6.85 and 9.47, respectively. So what it tells us is, for the most part, we've done a pretty good job at meeting or exceeding that seven and a half percent bogey. That having been said, I think we have to acknowledge that going forward, it's going to be even tougher to do so. And I'll be happy to explain during Q and A why we think that is the case. How we doing, done on our side of the sheet, which is our performance of assets? Well, I'm pleased to share with you the performance of our portfolio for one, two, three, five, and 10-year look-back periods, as well as benchmarked against our policy index, which is an index that's designed to reflect our mix between different asset classes, and probably even more importantly, against our peer group, which means that when you put the Cobb County Employee Pension Plan up against other pension plans for publicly traded entities that have less than $1 billion in assets, you'll notice that we are outperforming by a pretty healthy margin. And in fact, if you go back over the last 10 years, for example, we are in the eighth percentile for our performance. So the assets have done well, and so I think we, you know, I think we on the board are pleased with that. I think UBS was pleased with their performance, the guidance they provided us, but it obviously doesn't change the fact that we are still funded a little well below what we would like to see. Let me be a comment or two on why inflation matters when we think about these pension plans. Nominal returns are returns that are not adjusted for inflation. And inside a pension, we quote, the returns that we quote you are nominal returns. Well, when you go through a period of relatively low inflation, what that means is the nominal returns for most asset classes will come down, because historically, we think about asset returns having a real component and a nominal component. So as we've seen, the national economy move toward a expected inflation target that's probably 1 percent below what we probably would have agreed on 20 years ago, that means the expected nominal return on assets will go down. Well, unfortunately, we don't have anything offsetting that on the liability side. So, you know, if we were like the teachers' retirement system of Georgia, where there's a COLA in the pension, then when you get high inflation and high asset returns, there is some offset. But we don't have a COLA, so of course, when the nominal returns on the assets go down, there's no, there's no offset for us on the liability side of the balance sheet. And then if we would think about what kind of assumptions we've had in the past, as we say, we, one time, we were at 8 percent for our assumed return on our portfolio. We have gradually brought it down to seven and a half, where we stand today. The chart that you have before you shows you where the, for comparable public pension plans, 429 of them, you can see where the distribution is with regard to assumptions regarding asset return. I will tell you that the median assumed is now about 7.25 percent. Last week, I spoke at the Georgia Association of Public Pension Trustees, and that was one of the target, one of the questions that consistently came up, which is, how likely is it that you can make a viable assumption of generating 7.5 to 8 percent on your assets going forward? As I said, part of it has to do with the fact that we are in a low inflation and therefore a low nominal yield environment. Part of it also reflects that we've had, quite candidly, the longest bull run in equity markets in modern history. And so if you think that probably close to 80 percent of our assets are in equities, and they performed so well over the last 10 years, that you have to be a little bit skeptical that we're going to have that kind of return over the next 10 years. As such, our board has decided to bring forward a recommendation that we reduce the assumed rate of return on assets from 7.5 to 7.25. Now, keep in mind, in a very low interest rate environment that we're currently in, the lower the current rates, the lower the expected return on fixed income going forward, because as fixed income or bond instruments mature, we'll be rolling them over into lower yielding assets, and also, there will not be as much of a capital gain component that comes when you buy bonds with high yields and sell them lower, sell them later when they have lower yields and higher prices. So again, the, the board, the five of us are recommending moving the assumed rate down from 7.5 percent to 7.25. Obviously, if we lower the assumed rate of return, that works against us in terms of the percentage for how well-funded the pension plan is, but it will put us at the median for public pension plans. It will increase the county's actuarially determined contribution for FY '20 by approximately $2 million. Now, keep in mind, one of the changes that we put in, I think, six years ago, is that right, was we now have a 30-year closed-end amortization. So in other words, assuming that we make our bogey for the expected rate of return on assets, then we know that the contributions that the county makes every year to help close that gap should bring us back to being fully funded in 30 years and bring us back to being a target of like 90 percent funded, much faster than that. This is, of course, an example that shows us under the assumption of a 7.5 percent return, you know, essentially how we will perform in terms of being fully funded by year 2043 and being funded at about 75 percent by 2037. If we lower the rate that we assume from 7.5 to 7.25, it certainly pushes out into the future, the pace at which we get there, although the, we would still be fully funded in 2024 because of the 30-year closed-end amortization period. So that kind of takes us through the little formal presentation, which I know was, you'll probably want the books-on-tape version to listen to later. And I thought what we would do is, I'm comfortable having my board members join me if they would like, and share with you any insights and field any questions from the commissioners.
Thank you, Dr. Tutterow. You and I had talked before, I mean, and, and I think the first slide, you talked about what your role is as a board. And, you know, we've got this 30-year amortization, and it, it just seems that all we're doing is just barely holding on. And it would seem to me that it might be worth bringing some folks in to take a look and kind of come up with some other ways. I think that's what you and I talked about. What are, what are your thoughts about that?
Yeah, Commissioner, thank you. I, I would agree with that. I mean, at the end of the day, all we as board members can do is affect the asset mix. And the commission, obviously, can influence the design of the plans and have an influence upon the assumption of the rate of return, and it's the employees and the retirees that determine the, what, what shows up in the experience study. I, I think that we would be useful to have a group look at the liability side of the balance sheet, and that is, look at the design of the pension plan, look at how we allow credit to be earned. And certainly, that's not something that is traditionally handled by our, by the pension board, and quite candidly, it probably should be handled by a different group. I mean, our pension board is five individuals, four of them, we have three current employees and one retiree. Obviously, that's who you want for managing the assets, because they have, they eat their own cooking, if you will. They, they clearly have aligned interests. But when it comes to actually designing the pension plans themselves, or talking about how credit's earned, I think that probably would work against that.
Because it just seems to me that, you know, 30 years is an awful long time, and there's a whole lot of assumptions that have to be just right for it to, to get to the supposed 90 percent funding, you know, and with the, the history of pension funds in the United States now, you know, defined benefits plan, you got to have the people coming in the bottom to cover the ones going out the top, and you even showed on the slide, we don't have that anymore. And so we're already upside down on that. It just seems to me that, on the current path, we're never going to get there.
Well, we, we should. I mean, again, if we make the mandated contributions for the next, for the balance of the 30-year closed-end, but those contributions are going to get pretty large.
Well, I was just going to say, you make the mandated contributions, but these numbers are going to get a whole lot bigger than the ones that are on this slide right here.
That's correct, Commissioner. And also, UBS points out to us that, you know, if you have a couple of bad years in 2021, 22, then that puts you deeper in the hole. In fact, the right way to view these things is not to simply say 7.25 per year, but you can run what we call Monte Carlo simulations and actually estimate the distribution of returns at the end of the 30-year period.
Good to see you, Dr. Tutterow. You talked about a $15.6 million negative impact for 2018.
Let's see, where are we on here? What's that?
The difference.
Yes. Yeah, the, the difference, I mean, that's, that's the swing between had we earned 7.5 percent in 2018 versus the actual portfolio performance of 16, or 6.25, negative 6.15.
Okay. So, that's just 2018.
For one year. Which, which, of course, undermines that if you string together several years in a row, which we, which the market performs poorly, it can dig you in a deeper hole. And that was what, actually, when we had our actuaries with us last meeting, they showed us, you know, simulations based upon, what if you have a couple of bad years upfront? And if you have bad years upfront, then, of course, it means that your performance and your contributions for the subsequent years will have to be that much better. Sometimes it's tempting to think, well, 7.25 means we're going to try to hit that every year. Of course, we don't. That's, that's an average over a long period of time that we're assuming.
Okay. So with the chart you have out, out to 2043, that's where we get to the 100 percent fully funded?
Yes. And again, that comes from...
With a 7.5 or 7.25.
Right. And of course, that's, that's, that's mechanical in the sense of saying that we start a 30-year closed-year amortization in 2013, so we're guaranteed we get there, assuming the contributions are put in by the BOC that are, that would be implied by that amortization schedule.
And that, but that's no changes, that's just with the hybrid that was in place in 2010, there's no changes to the retirees that are grandfathered in, for lack of a better word?
Right. That assumes no changes in the structure of any of the plans. It also assumes that our experience studies that we have in place today are indicative of what is likely to be the case going forward.
Okay. We're hoping for a better outlook.
Yeah. Let me see, Amber? Christian Cupid?
The 100 percent return funded ratio appears in 2043. Has that date changed since you've been projecting this, or has that always been the projected date where this would be 100 percent funded?
It shouldn't have changed. Many, seven or eight years ago, the regulatory agencies asked pension plans or said best practice to put closed-end amortizations in place. Bill, correct me if I'm wrong on this. So when we put it in in 2013, it's not like we're saying the performance of our assets will get us there. What we're saying is the performance of the assets plus the contributions added by the BOC every year will get you there. And so it's going to be 100 percent by design, because we've calculated in additional contributions by the Board of Commissioners on top of what is earned by assets.
Okay, even with people living longer, is this projected to stay at 2043?
Assuming that the mortality studies, experience studies, as they stand today, are accurate.
Okay. So that hasn't changed to, that hasn't changed to modify this 2043 100 percent?
But that would, those numbers, I believe, include the most recent experience study?
That is correct.
And, and so understand, I mean, I, I know you understand, Commissioner Cupid, going forward, there could have changes in, in experience, depending on propensity to retire versus continue working, et cetera. But it has, those experience studies have changed over time, and in fact, part of the reason that we don't have better news, news today is that the experience study we did most recently would show people living longer and therefore drawing more benefits.
Okay. I think Commissioner Ott was gracious in talking about the capacity of all the parties at the table to determine what's the best combination to provide, you know, the best benefit to our employees to cover their pensions, but you provided that it falls on the Board of Commissioners to provide any changes in assumptions for the rate of return? Can you explain that?
No. Yes, thank you. What we, as a pension plan, have domain over, if you will, is the selection of managers and assets. Clearly, the employees and retirees change their own behavior. The design of the plan should be the total domain of the Board of Commissioners, and the assumption of which rate, rate of return we have going forward probably should be kind of a joint decision between the Pension Plan Board and the BOC. Obviously, we're not elected officials. We don't have the ability to stroke checks on behalf of the citizens of Cobb County, but at the same time, hopefully, it would be a joint dialogue.
Are there, I know there's some recommendation to have a consultant come in, perhaps, and look at what other options there are. I mean, are there any recommended changes that we should be looking at, looking at, Bill particularly, over the life of this program? Is there something that should be on our radar? Is there something we should be considering that we have not?
So I, I have kind of dual roles here, so it's kind of a unique situation, but to stay in line with what Roger said, what we want to recommend today is simply based on the asset return side. The, what I think you're referring to is the benefit on the liability side. So those are two very different conversations, and that, for the pension board, we don't get involved in the benefit aspect, mostly just the asset returns is where we're coming at it from today. And to kind of go back to one of your previous comments, when we do the experience study, the only thing that changes is the mix between return on investment and contribution. So that 2043 date stays the same, how we get there is what changes. Because if we obviously have bigger returns, we have to contribute less, and the opposite is also the case. But I think to your question about the benefit side, that is a very long conversation. Now, one of the things I want to bring, you know, make sure everybody's aware of, the most, the majority of that liability is on retirees that we have, can have no effect or control over. So that's where the biggest chunk of the liability is going to rest. As we showed that chart of the traditional plan, there are getting to be very few employees on the traditional plan, and most of them are on the hybrid. Hybrid pretty much covers the cost of itself on an annual basis.
Okay.
So that's the challenge that this board faced because of the retroactive benefits that were given. Those liabilities are almost, I won't say fixed, but very limited control and very limited on the ability to change those.
What I'm, okay, and I appreciate you sharing that. My capacity is limited to be able to determine if there's any improvement to be made without some education on your end as to what that is. So I'm just hoping as we have this, these conversations, that you would help us be as informed as possible so that we are making the best decisions to ensure that this is going to be fully funded in 2043, because I'm taking, you know, really taking your word for the change of the rate of return to, to meet these needs, and I would continue to, to ask for you guys to, to provide that information for us.
Sure, and absolutely. Commissioner, one of the things that we want to look at is, and like Roger talked about earlier, the last quarter of 2018 was awful. As of September 30, we had exceeded the 7.5 percent. For the whole fiscal year, we were there. And then between October and December, we went from north of 7.5 to negative 6.15. So that timing is extremely critical. So those are, and we're going to have years, you know, I say we're going to. Ideally, we have years that we exceed the 7.5 percent by, you know, a good margin, and we're going to have years that we come under. And that's why he showed the rate of return for both three, five, and I think we did inception. So you have kind of that long-term outlook, but we also have to rely on UBS as the, what is the forecast going forward? And that's, that's our concern and heartburn as we move forward from the investment standpoint, and that's one of the major reasons for the recommendation of going at 7.25. So we want to make sure that we get there in 2043, and the only way to do that is contribute a little bit more. And I think we talked about this at budget adoption time. We went ahead and put in the $2 million increase for 20 because we knew this conversation was coming.
Okay.
And so that, that, and actually, the board took a step even beyond that and made an additional discretionary contribution in 19 of 2 million. So we're taking these positive steps from the board's standpoint to do additional funding to make sure we meet these goals.
And we'll just evaluate that year by year to determine what would have to be dedicated to.
The last, the last slide gives us a plan. That plan will change every year. As we get better returns, lesser returns, we'll have to be flexible, but that gives you a, a long-term forecast of what this will look like. But again, it'll change slightly year to year.
Are there funds reserved for this fluctuation, or?
So what we do is, we, when we do the budget process, we go ahead and, we, we have this information, we go ahead and plug this in right off, right at the gate. So this is always a conversation we have, say, hey, this is going up, this isn't a discretionary conversation. This is, it's never been a debate amongst the board. It's, we know we need to fund our annual actuarial determined contribution. So we go ahead and do that, and, but we let you know as a board of, hey, this is what it's going to be, this is the increase, so you make sure everyone is aware. And it does step up on a regular basis, and that, until we get to the, I think, in 2040, we start to see it come down. So I mean, that's a long ways away. We're going to see increases as we move forward. But as you have less people on the defined, traditional defined benefit plan drawing benefits, until you get to that point, the contributions will continue to increase.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Cupid, just kind of explain where I'm looking at it. Having been in the situation where we lost our pension and, and industry, I mean, most of them have gone away. Part of the problem is that the, and I forget what terminology you use, the snapshot of people's that...
Experience study.
Experience study. That's a snapshot with predictions as to what's going to happen in the future. The rate of return is a prediction as what's going to happen in the future. And as we saw in this, in the end of 2018, a very few short months can have a huge impact. You know, and if we have another period like '05 to '08, it's, it's sunk. I mean, you're talking huge numbers that it's just going to be taking an increasingly larger chunk out of the revenue of the county. You know, and, and back four or five years ago, I made a suggestion, and everybody kind of pooh-potted, and it was, it's a lot bigger number now, but, you know, some of the, some of the things, right now, we're looking at expected rate of returns and the economy to do a certain thing to be able to meet our, our goals. You know, one of the things I suggested some years back was the possibility of, if you, if you freeze, and, and now we're getting to the point where we don't have as many people in the defined benefits plan as we did back then, but if you were to freeze any further, I don't know what the term would be, earning of future benefits, and, and then you float a bond to fill the gap, to get yourself to 85, 90 percent funding, now you have a annual bond payment that is fixed, and you're not so much relying on the rate of return for that defined benefits plan to catch up, because you've put this big, huge chunk of money in it. Now, you're still going to have some fluctuation, but you're going to be, you know, if you put yourself at like the 85 or 90 percent funding rate, you, the county now, instead of not knowing how much each year the bill's going to have to decide, has to come out of the revenue from the county, you have a set number. And then what you do is you switch everybody to the hybrid plan or cash plan, and there are plenty of instances out there. I think the first one was with IBM, where the way you take care of the employees that are older and more senior is you change the percentage that the county would put into their cash plan for a certain number of years, and that's how you make up the difference. And then you switch to a flat percentage. Then once again, you have a set amount of money that has to go in to, to fund the bond that takes care of the defined benefits plan, and you have no more further increase in the liability, because no one's accruing any more time for that. And then you have a set amount that goes into the cash plan, because the cash plan is based on the person's salary. And so then, from the employee's perspective, those that are in the defined benefits plan, they know that, okay, it's going to be there. And the ones that are in the cash plan, the beauty of that is it's portable. It goes with them. If they, if they were to go on to another job, or their, you know, their job got changed or whatever, they get to take it with them. And, and I just, you know, back when we, I proposed it the first time, I think it was about $300 million bond, and I think it's probably double that now. But that would, would that not kind of take care of a lot of what we're talking here, the uncertainties?
Certainly, one, one, one solution. I mean, I would encourage, two comments I would make. One is encourage all ideas to come forward. I mean, I, we have no monopoly on wisdom, certainly. There's a lot of talented people in the community, some could be referred to by the actuaries that could help brainstorm on ways to rectify things on the liability side. The other thing I would remind us of is, you know, in these tight labor markets, I know the county feels a lot of pressure to try to retain workers and, and put some upward pressure on workers. pressure on wages. But every time we give wages, no matter how well-earned they are, or increases, salary increases, it has implications for those remaining in the traditional plan as well, and also the hybrid. So when we rate, give a 3% raise, as well deserved as that is, it also raises the liability of the plans.
Could you go back to the 10-year track of the chart here, the graph?
Yes, yes.
Starting where we, in 1996, we, I'll go to the, where we changed the plan.
Oh, funding, okay, thank you, yes.
Yeah, there you go, all right. I'm trying to figure out why, understand why in 2008, 2012, I mean, it's remarkable that we stayed flat, given that was the, during the, the center of the recession. But given that the late, that the stock market has improved significantly, then we are still staying even. Why is that?
Well, again, some of it would be contemporaneous with those asset performances. There are also changes in the retirement rates, and we've had several experience studies, all of which have moved against us, right?
Yes. And, and one of the big reasons that we stayed flat for five years is we decreased the assumed rate of return from eight to five. So we did a step down for five years, and every one of those years, we basically stayed flat. So, and rather than this case of doing a step down from seven and a half to 7.25 over a period of time, they're asking to do it one time, take, take a big chunk out, and then looking to move forward. Because we did the step-down approach, and over that five-year period where we stayed flat, and we met our annual required contributions, we had good returns in the market because of that step-down, they were basically offset by assuming that reduction in rate of return.
Well, that goes to Commissioner Ott's point, though.
Sure.
If we don't continue to have, this is the performance we get with an incredible stock market, all right, which we know won't last forever. We're never going to get, we're never going to get anywhere.
Well, I, I can't imagine that we would, I can't imagine a scenario by which you would lower the assumed rate of return below 7%. We're trying to take it down to the median of 7.25. Let me kind of do the math for a moment. You know, if you read Warren Buffett, you know, the average rate of return for RISB-500 with dividends reinvested, you might get 10%, maybe nine, maybe eight. Given the run the market's had, a number like 8% is more likely going to be the case going forward. So take 8%, and if that's 80% of your portfolio, you're going to have 6.8, 6.4 for return. The remaining 20% is in fixed income. You're going to be lucky to squeeze out 2.5% on that, on that 20%. So that's another half a percent. Well, you're not even making 7% with that return. So it's just, it's just, it's painful to see, but it's the mathematics of what kind of return can you generate when you're capped at 80% equity.
Okay, well, if you go back, let's go to the next, the chart that has.
Before we leave this chart, but Roger, if you have a similar drop as you did from '05 to '08, your steady line out there in '18 is going to drop off the bottom of the chart.
It, it will drop. Now, now keep in mind, that was the most pronounced correction in equity markets since the 1930s as a percentage. Also, the market didn't peak until I believe it was early to March, early to mid 2007. So we had some drop between 2005, '06, and '07, not related to the market pulling back. Now, I was not on the board at that time. I don't know what the catalysts were, but let me give you another example of how things can get turned around. Let's say you have an early retirement program in the county, and you incent people to go ahead and retire. That's great if you don't replace those positions. But if you have an early retirement program, and then you turn around and hire new people into those jobs, guess what? It hits, it hits the pension plan. I don't know if that's what happened then or not, but all kinds, okay.
Okay. If you go to the chart that has where you, that says where you're going to be 100% funded in 2043. It's right there. Are these, are these then your dollars or future your dollars?
I'm sorry, say that again, sir.
Are these current dollars or future?
No, sorry, not constant, they're current dollars. But understand that that's, of course, the total contribution coming in, both what you would normally put in with the funding formula and then the additional contribution each year, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
So you, so basically, the column, the seven and a half percent employer contributions, you can see that caps out at $74.8 million.
Right.
Under the current assumption. It would change and go to 2043 under the 7.25 to 78.5 million. And obviously, there are fluctuations along the way. But like we said, this still gets you 100% funded in 2043. It just changes the mix between return on investments and employer contributions. So, but that, that would be our planning tool from a budgetary spec, perspective of what do we need to contribute each year to make this happen?
Yeah, but are these, are these inflated dollars or current year dollars?
These are current dollars.
Yes.
Today.
Okay. Sure. Come here, Campbell.
So, Bill, does this chart take into account the changes we just made this past year?
This does.
It does.
Yeah, that was one of the things that we wanted to work with them. So this has everything that was approved by the board, as well as the, and one of the other things that we didn't talk about is the pay-in-class study that affected this. So, but this has the, the plus-up for public safety and all of the other county employees in these numbers here today. And both for the seven and a half and seven and a quarter. So both columns are up to date with those numbers.
Commissioner Earl.
One more question. What is the total number of employees or retirees on the traditional plan? And what is that equivalent to in dollars each year or for 2018?
So you're north of 2,600?
For retirees, yeah.
Is that on here?
Red line, yeah, so north of 2,600 in 2018 for retirees and about 2,150, I'm guessing, in terms of active.
And how, what's the dollar amount for those 2,600 that are paid out each year?
So we can, we can get you the breakdown of, like, you're asking for this year's contribution. What is the mix between what we pay for retirees versus, versus active, correct? So like, let's say we, we contributed 57 million. How much of the 57 went to retirees versus active?
Mm-hmm.
It, it is definitely on the majority towards the retiree side, but I can give you the exact breakout.
Yeah.
So we do have that.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners. Next year, hopefully, we'll bring back happy news. Thank you for your services, County.
Yeah, thank you. All right, our next presentation is, uh, proposed revisions to the county's current tax allocation district financing policy and guidelines.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners, Deputy County Manager. Staff is pleased to have the opportunity to present information to you regarding some proposed revisions to the tax allocation district financing policy and guidelines. By way of background, we're going to touch on a couple of things. We're going to touch on, one, what a tax allocation district is, some of the benefits of the T A Ds, the history of T A Ds here in Cobb, in Cobb County. And then our proposed changes will be covered by Marcellus Williams, who's our economic development coordinator, and he also will cover the process for establishing T A D in unincorporated Cobb County. Before we get started, I want to be sure that everybody got a hard copy of the T A D policy and guidelines that was there. It should show the strike-throughs and the, of the proposed revisions. And so we will get started. Thank you. So T A D is really a financing mechanism or an incentive tool in which bonds could potentially be issued for a, to pay for public infrastructure and other improvements in a specific designated area. And this is authorized under Georgia, uh, chapter 44, title 36 of the Georgia Code. T A D, T A Ds can be used to capture incremental property tax revenue from new redevelopment activity that occurs in these geographical areas. The anticipated or actual increases in these can be used to finance potentially debt payments to promote development activity in these specific areas. The economic development in, in turn can be used to stimulate growth in tax revenues in the district and also outside the district, which is called the halo effect. A T A D and a, it's not a T A D incentive, or T A Ds and T A D incentives are not property tax abairments that are granted by local development authorities. They're not special services districts, and they're not urban renewal. The redevelopment law enables cities and counties like Cobb to designate these areas by local adoption of approved redevelopment plan under the guidelines that are specified in state law where T A Ds can be offered. And they can pay for eligible public infrastructure and components of the project or addressing some environmental issues, as has been the case in some of the projects that have moved forward here in Cobb County. A T A D usually consists of identified tax parcels within a designated redevelopment area in a county and may offer T A D assistance or T I F assistance, as it's known in other parts of the, the country. They can only be established within a redevelopment area. A T A D can contain one parcel, a few parcels, or many individual parcels. Usually, they have a finite life and can be dissolved by the local government at a time, as long as there's no debt obligation that's outstanding. It can also include up to a maximum of 10% of the jurisdiction's tax digest. In terms of jurisdiction obligation, and you, we've got to demonstrate that there's a qualification for redevelopment area. T A D incentives must have to demonstrate that they're needed and necessary to meet a local objectives such as unusually high development cost, property, property incentive or assembly issues, and then inadequate public infrastructure. And sometimes we have issues with environmental remediation as well. The redevelopment plan is required, has to define these local objectives. There is no state oversight or approval process for the redevelopment plan, but the, they do have to be, the, the district itself has to be certified by the Georgia Department of Revenue to establish the base value for financing purposes. Staff has done some additional research in and around the metro Atlanta area and talked to some jurisdictions about additional policy considerations that they include in their T A D policies. Some of them include, or policy considerations that address or require job creation, the generation of construction jobs, and permanent jobs as part of the project. Some of them incorporate affordable housing in mixed-use projects that include residential. In this particular case, there's a minimum 20% requirement of the units to be affordable at 80% of the area median income. Other jurisdictions establish a residential, residential components include housing opportunity market plan for county employees, public safety personnel, educators, and other publics, public sector employees as part of the redevelopment plan's efforts as well. And then place-making, applying best practices in urban design and place-making is also a factor that is included in some of these T A D, T A D requirements as well. Just a little history in terms of T A Ds here specifically in Cobb County. In 2002, local legislation was introduced and approved by the General Assembly that actually authorized the, an election via referendum regarding the use of redevelopment powers in Cobb County. That was approved. And then 2030, April of 2003, the Board of Commissioners actually adopted the first T A D policy and guideline, and it was revised four years later than April of 2007. Since that time, in 2003, we've had the city of, Cities of Acworth, Marietta, Smyrna have actually entered into an governmental agreements between the county and, and the Board of Education. And then some of the major projects that have moved forward since then, the Marietta Millsloft, the Village at Fraser Park, Johnny Walker Homes, the Lakeside Marketplace in Acworth and in John Paul Village, and Belmont Hills in Smyrna. And just to give you an idea of what the valuations have been since they were established back in the early 2000s, in 2004, the Marietta Tax Allocation District One, which is a city center of South Renaissance, and you have three participating tax jurisdictions there. You have Acworth, I'm sorry, you have a Marietta, Board of Commissioners, and the Board of Ed. It started at about just over 48 million. In 2019, it is now valued at over $136 million. So you see there's a, a increase in the base year of over 150%. In Smyrna, along the Lateral Road Corridor, you have City of Smyrna, Board of Commissioners, and Board of Education participating in that T A D as well. That started at a base value just about 29 million and now has a base value of, of over 116 million, which is about a 303% increase over that 15-year period. And then in Acworth, you have the Lakeside Marketplace, and that, the participating jurisdictions in that case are City of Acworth, Board of Education, and Board of, and Board of Commissioners. That started with a base value of just over a million, and then it's now over 22 million, which is over 2,200% increase in that period. So Marcellus will come up and just talk with you a little bit about some of the proposed changes to the T A D.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. As Michael said, I'll talk about the proposed changes to the current T A D policy. The first change is project-specific T A Ds and area T A Ds will now be both considered. Previously, in the previous policy, we only had project-specific T A Ds. Area T A Ds will include a broad area with potential future redevelopment projects that will be identified, and it's more attractive for developers as well. The next major change was, um, major infrastructure improvements will now be viewed more favorably. This will allow for substantial future redevelopment to occur. When I, when we talk about major infrastructure improvements, things such as sewer and water lines being built, sidewalks, streetscaping, and road improvements as well. The next proposed change that we added was quality mixed-use facilities, live, work, and play facilities, something that has been, we've seen in other jurisdictions that they've added to their T A D policy. This high-quality redevelopment will create a halo effect, as Michael spoke about earlier, of reinvestment in the surrounding areas outside the T A D, the T A D boundary. Next slide. The other changes that we added to the policy, we broadened the definition of redevelopment costs and capital costs. And the plan now, previously didn't, it will contain a school system impact analysis. That analysis will include an estimate number of new public school students that could be anticipated as redevelopment occurs, the location of school facilities within the pros, proposed redevelopment area, and an estimate of educational special purpose local option sales tax projected to be generated from the proposed redevelopment. In this, the next thing I will speak about is the proposed, how to establish a T A D here in Cobb County. The first step will be the applicant will meet with our office, and he will, they will discuss the project with us, and they'll receive an application at the, then. The applicant, the applicant will submit the application, the required application fee, and redevelopment plan to our office. After that, a meeting of the T A D Advisory Committee will occur. The, the committee will consist of staff members from the following county departments, economic development, community development, the tax assessor's office, finance, county attorney's office, and superintendents from the Cobb County Board of Education or Marietta Board of Education or other staff members. This committee also can, if it's, if needed, representation from other departments can be a part of this committee as well. The next step, within 21 days, the T A D Advisory Committee will determine to accept or reject the application. If they accept the application, we will begin to work with the applicant on the project. We will draft a T A D financing plan, a T A D redevelopment plan, and we will begin preliminary negotiations with the applicant to secure agreeable terms for a development agreement with the county. After that, after a draft is completed of the financing plan and redevelopment plan and redevelopment terms have been met, we will present this before you all, the Board of Commissioners at a work session. If approved, then we will make a recommendation before the board to proceed with allowing the project to move forward. We will have a presentation before the board, and then we will request a public hearing as well to get the public's input. After the public hearing is conducted and hearing from the public's input and the board's recommendation, the board then has three options. You can either accept the plan, reject the plan, or we can come back to the table and modify the plan if you're not satisfied with it. We can re-enter negotiations. This, this, this will only occur after we've had two public hearings. And finally, once approved, the document, once approved and documents signed by both parties, the T A D could be created by the Board of Commissioners effective on December 31st of the year of creation, unless you, the board decides to lay. unless you, the board decides to lay to the following, December 31st. Any questions?
Questions from the board? Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. The redevelopment plan, is that something that's created when someone goes forward to want to utilize the TAD program? Or do we put in redevelopment plans as a board within certain areas of the county?
Historically in Cobb County, it's been initiated by a private sector developer. But I do know in other jurisdictions, the local government does initiate the redevelopment plan on their own. For an area, for an area that-
For an area?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so if you go back to the prior slide. So, looking at point number five, it says, if accepted, a TAD financing plan and TAD redevelopment plan will be drafted. So would we have our own redevelopment plan, and then an applicant will come forward with something that's more specific to their-
They would, we would actually put together a redevelopment plan and a financing-
That would be the county's end. This is, these are our steps in the process-
These are ours, yes.
To determine what that redevelopment plan is.
And then theoretically, then a developer, knowing that we have established a redevelopment area, would come to us with a project in our redevelopment area.
Okay, so, okay, this throws my assessment of this off. Okay, so we develop our redevelopment plan, a developer comes. Are there public hearings that are associated with the plan a developer brings forward?
Yes.
Okay, and not necessarily would we craft or draft that redevelopment plan for an area?
I, I would say that we would still have, we would still have public hearings for ones that were done internally as well, Commissioner.
Okay. And then the team that you mentioned, they would review that, whatever the developer is bringing forward?
Yes, the TAD Advisory Committee.
Okay. Okay. That's all I have for right now.
Anybody else? Commissioner Gamble? I mean, I'm sorry, Commissioner Burrell?
Is there a certain criteria for an area, like five-mile radius or one mile?
Radius from?
To be, to qualify?
There are, there are some criteria.
And would we start with the areas that are already on our redevelopment list? Like for me, Canton Row, for Commissioner Cupid, Veterans Memorial, or other areas like that that are heavy with the redevelopment list, or?
If, if we, if we, if we think there are, if there's a strong potential for redevelopment in those areas, then yes. I think we would have to have some conversations with developers who expressed interest in those areas, because we don't want to create a, create and certainly issue any bonds if we don't see projects come to fruition, because it's the incremental increase in those taxes, property taxes are going to pay for any debt service that may be we may have to secure for those projects. So I think we really have to be sure the development, redevelopment is going to take place in those areas.
Yeah, because, I mean, a lot of these, these areas that are in need of redevelopment are already listed on our redevelopment list, the county redevelopment list, but also are either in rehab zones or enterprise zones that would qualify too.
Right, so let's just, if, if there was a, let's say a shopping center or some, some development that we would revelt, then they, they could certainly submit an application at a redevelopment plan that would go through this process that we've already, that we have laid out.
Okay.
Michael, I was here, was on the planning commission when the last TAD was discussed with Belmont. And there was huge pushback from the school system. You know, all of this is great, but this is just the county side.
Exactly.
And in most of these cases, and Belmont was a prime example, it doesn't work without schools signing on. And the problem is, is schools don't get a whole lot of benefit. I mean, if you look at Belmont, yeah, there's some residential properties in there, and they did get a new school. But I think they were going to build it anyway. I, I just, I know that when this discussion was had, when it was a site-specific one, that, you know, the schools were getting incredible pushback. I, I just don't see how the schools are going to buy into now taking up an area and saying, well, we don't know what we're going to do, but we're just going to take this kind of, you know, it's not totally taking off the tax rolls, but it's pretty close.
Well, actually, nothing's coming off the tax rolls.
Well, it's, it's not, I know the base tax is still there.
Right.
Okay, but any benefit from any development that comes in there is what, what is not realized by the schools. And I just don't, in this current environment, I don't see how you're ever going to get a TAD passed by school board.
Well, I would just say, we, we've had at least a very high-level preliminary discussion with Superintendent Ragsdale. We've actually shared this with him, just walked him through it and given him the opportunity to provide feedback. We've not heard back from him. But that's also another reason why we have them as part of the TAD Advisory Committee, so that they're aware of it early on and can hopefully get educated and may be comfortable with TADs as they move forward. And then I would say another reason that we wanted to make a change to the policy too is this school system impact analysis that addresses the financial and operational impact is something that's key, so that they have an idea of how this might impact their system. There may, there may be projects that have no residential component. It may be strictly office residential, I'm sorry, strictly office or industrial, which would not have any impact necessarily on their school system. So that's one way to look at it.
Can you send us your PowerPoint?
Yes, ma'am, we sure can. And what we wanted to accomplish today, just to be clear, was just to, to share these revisions with you. If you've got any feedback, please feel free to share those, that with us. And if there is consensus, we can also add some of the policy consideration items that we discussed, the affordable housing, the workforce housing. You would need to add some language to that, and then we could bring that in a future Board of Commissioners meeting for your consideration.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
Thank you, sir.
Needed and necessary versus but for, is that the same analysis?
I'm sorry.
Use terms needed and, needed and necessary would be thresholds for someone being considered under this program? Is that the same as the but-for consideration that needs to be provided? If you go back on one of your first, on your slides.
Okay.
Keep going.
I know in, in the policy, it talks about-
Okay, a TAD incentive must be needed and necessary to achieve these local objectives here. And in the language I'm seeing in the policy, it has a but-for. Is that considered the same lens of which these will be evaluated by?
Well, yeah, the policy says but for, the, the use of TAD financing, the project wouldn't be feasible, so.
I just know there seemed to be a lot of hangup on that term, terminology in the past, where I know I'm talking to a former school board member, they were saying that some of the projects that were being proposed couldn't establish that if this financing tool wasn't presented, that it would move forward. It just seems as if it provided a, a high bar that, and, and could have some level of subjectivity. So, you know, if, if that level of analysis is needed, what, what does it take to show that this is the only way it's going to move forward? Is it, the area has not developed in 30 years, is it?
Right, and so if you go to page four of the policy itself, Commissioner, and if you look at paragraph F and G, and then we talk about a 10-year trend analysis of real estate values for the site in question.
What section is that?
Page four, paragraph F and G. So this is the type of information that an application would have to include, sort of a 10-year trend analysis of real, of real property values for the site. And then jumping down to paragraph G, we talk about application must include a 20-year projections that depict the following, you know, the values of the parcels and things, so.
Their crime even could be considered.
So we would look very closely at, at those, those trends to see if it really warrants participation in this program.
Okay, I think it's helpful to provide that guide.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, but, and Dr. Tetero is not here anymore, but you know, in every investment thing I've ever seen, it said, past performance is no guarantee of future performance. And so, you know, this whole thing about the TADs, when you have a site-specific one, the idea is that you're looking at what's going to go in there, and you have a pretty good idea that that is going to increase the value of the property because you're adding stuff to it. But if you start doing an area TAD without a site-specific plan, I don't see how you can possibly justify in, the increase in value in the property to cover the, the TAD. I mean, it, it just seems like what you're in essence saying is, well, we're just going to kind of lay this TAD on this area of land and hope that it attracts investment with no real guarantees that it's going to. I mean, I, I, you know, the way the site-specific one works, it, it's pretty easy to figure out. But you just lay a TAD on an area of land?
I've seen it be very successful in the city of Atlanta. I mean, they have, if you go to their website, they will show you different geographic areas, and you will be surprised at very difficult, tough areas, where I've seen this program bringing development that they say can't go in certain areas of Cobb County. And I'm saying, you know, our conditions don't even look as observably challenged as the areas where I'm seeing this reinvigoration occur in Atlanta. So, I mean, I, I, I've seen, I've seen it with my own eyes where it's worked.
Well, I think then, if you come back in front of this board, you need to bring examples of what your, this area type of TAD, because I am not familiar with any of the things that Commissioner Cupid refers to. And I just don't see, I mean, I just, I just remember the knock-down drag-out we had with Belmont. And the reason it took so long for it to start was because even though he had a site-specific TAD, he couldn't get the development in there that he said was going to go in there. And it wasn't until the market turned around and, and some other components became popular that, then he, he came back. I think he was probably back in here three or four times, either getting the TAD extended or changed to try to meet market conditions to finally get what's in there now. I mean, if you think about, that was done in '04, right?
Right.
So here we are, 15 years later.
And then the market crashed.
Right, but 15 years, it took 15 years to do a TAD that was site-specific.
Well, actually, Smyrna was not site-specific. They had, they had projects in a, in a general area, actually.
No, but I mean, I remember when we, when it came in front of this board, once I was up here, that, because I, I remember talking to Chuck about, you know, looking at it and, and, and we're going to do this, and then we're going to do that, and the school is going to be over here, and then this was going to be over there. But I mean, it, you know, it's 15 years.
Well, technically, we only have one site-specific TAD, and that's the one in Acworth, Lake, Lakeside Marketplace. All the other ones are area, area TADs, and they're none in unincorporated Cobb, they're all in the cities.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
Thank you, sir.
And our third presentation is an update regarding the preparation for the 2020 U.S. Decennial Census, the 10-year census.
Why do you keep using these big words, Jason?
Not my word choice, sir. Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners, Deputy County Manager. Back in November, this past November, this board authorized the creation of a complete count committee to assist with informing the public, educating the public regarding the U.S. Census and to encourage them to respond when the Decennial Census comes back around in 2020. So today, my purpose is to give you all a refresher and an update of sorts to just kind of let you know what we've been doing with the complete count committee and to answer any questions that you all may have. And to assist with answering questions, we have joining us today Linda Batiste and Doris Turner from the U.S. Census Bureau. They are partnership specialists who cover a pretty large territory and Cobb County is one of the areas that these two ladies help assist. So with that, we'll go right into it. This is an overview of what I'll be talking about today. And just a little bit of background to refresh you about the census. The Decennial Census is mandated by Title 13 of the U.S. Constitution. It has happened every 10 years since the year 1790. Requires account of residents in all 50 states and U.S. territories. The impacts are pretty straightforward, but far-reaching nonetheless. It's about representation, determines the apportionment of Congress and number of seats in the U.S. House of Representatives, assists in the drawing of local legislative districts. We use it a lot locally as well, and I'll get to that in a minute. Also factors into the distribution of over $675 billion annually over the 10-year period between one census and the next. Also helps into factoring, factors into forecasting future transportation needs, among other things. Again, Title 13 of the U.S. Constitution mandates the census, but it also protects the information that is collected through the census and keeps it confidential. All census employees are required to take an oath to keep that information protected. And violation of that oath results in some potentially stiff penalties for census employees. So that is a big part of the message that the complete count committee is working to push out there, because as many of you all know, in the news over the past year or so, there's been a lot made of, you know, asking people about their citizenship on the census questionnaire and how that information might be used against them or whatnot. But one thing that this confidentiality clause does is protects the information from being distributed to anyone who's not authorized. And that includes state, federal, local, law enforcement agencies, or anyone else. So, you know, the information is protected, and that's something that we're working hard to get out there so that people are more inclined to respond. Okay, so new for the 2020 Decennial Census, they're pushing paperless response. So, and I think I talked about this the last time I came before the board in November. The big push is to go online this year with the census. And in March, people will start to receive postcards in the mail with unique identifiers listed on them. And they can go on to the website, enter that unique identifier. It'll be aligned with their address, and then that person can go ahead and respond to the census accordingly online. For those who aren't as comfortable doing it online, there's also going to be an option where you can, pick up the phone and have someone actually take the information for you over the phone. Also, in 2020, or this coming census, previously provided data is being used to help reduce the number of in-person follow-ups. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment as well. Okay, so with that, why is the census important? I talked a little bit about it on one of my earlier slides. Political power, representation for, for people. Again, Georgia gained two, two seats in the U.S. House of Representatives after the 2010 census. So maintaining a high response rate or increasing, improving the response rate is, is important, because at the very least, you want to keep that representation, if not expanded. It can also be used for local considerations as well, as far as drawing local city council districts or county commission districts. States often use it as well to portion their legislatures, legislative bodies. Also from, and this is one thing I tell people a lot just in conversation, you want to think about the census and population counts from a local standpoint. Think about, you know, our local transportation splosts, you know. We collect all this money over a five- or six-year period, and the cities also get a portion of the money to do, you know, their projects with, but their portion is based on their population, which is in turn based on census count. So, you know, I, I, I use that as an example to try to bring it down to a level that, you know, people can relate to, because they see it every day when they drive around. Money, economic impact, again, I talked about that earlier. And the main reason that this complete count committee has been created is to, again, to help boost awareness and maximize the count, because we could easily be missing out on opportunities because of a census undercount. And the potential, given the current environment, is there for that to happen. So I think that's why it's really important. So I think that's why it's really important, you know, that the work that the Complete Count Committee is doing is highlighted. So again, I talked a little bit about the Complete Count Committee, but here's what it is. It's a volunteer group established to create awareness and increase awareness and motivate response to the census. We have various subcommittees within the Complete Count Committee, and those subcommittees are designed to represent different sectors or segments of the community. Everyone from, you know, the religions of faith-based community, nonprofit organizations, business chambers of commerce, various ethnic and diversity, diversity-based organizations. We all, we have representation from all of those sectors on the Complete Count Committee. And the idea is to use these individuals as, that them being trusted voices within their respective sectors or communities is intended for them to be the team captain, if you will, to kind of help spread the word about the census and help people understand what it is versus what it's not. So again, the goal is to increase the self-response rate, and self-response specifically is responding to the census within a timeframe spanning from mid-March through the end of May, which in that timeframe also includes Census Day, which is April first, and I'll talk a little bit more about that as well. And those other points are pretty much covered previously. So let's talk a little bit about some of our activities. We've, 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 first of all, I got to give kudos to Brittany Hughes, our Communications Coordinator and Community Development. She has been an absolute rock star going out to events and producing graphics and logos and shooting videos, editing them, and one of which I'll show you here briefly. We've also covered some recent events such as the Cobb County International Festival, the National Night Out Event for Public Safety back on August sixth. We've also partnered with the cities of Smyrna and Marietta. They have established their own Complete Count Committees. And, you know, we've gone to help cover some of their events as well. I actually helped cover the Taste of Smyrna a couple Saturdays, Saturdays ago. And we're also taking information from the members of the committee to help us be informed of more community-based events. For instance, this past Saturday, I covered an event over at Fair Oaks Recreation Center, which was a health and wellness fair that was put on by the local chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. So we're just trying to get out there and get in front of as many people as we can. So with that, hold on. Go see if CP can click on the link and show you this video, which you may or may not have seen already, but this is a good example of some of the work we've been doing. Or maybe not. Well, if it's not, if, if that link isn't going to work, I can provide that to you offline. We do have it up on the website, which is being hosted by Cobb Libraries. The library's staff has been a big partner with us in this effort as well, going out to these community events and helping provide different activities to draw attention to, you know, our table setup. They are also going to be going out into the community with tablets and laptops and setting up kiosks at their libraries and other locations so that people can actually respond to the census at the appropriate time. Okay, well, I've just been informed that we've run into some technical difficulties with the presentation. It looks like it has frozen because my clicker doesn't work and the keyboard doesn't work either. Oh, okay, we're back. All right. Did we jump ahead a little bit? Okay, okay, all right. Very good. All right. So another big effort we've kicked off recently is a partnership with Kennesaw State University and their Department of Student Leadership and Service, which is basically a campus life office that helps coordinate student activities on campus. And we've worked with some of Linda and Doris's cohorts at the Census Bureau to go out and, and inform college students about the census and encourage their participation. It goes hand in hand with a lot of their other, you know, civic duty efforts, so to speak, as far as getting students to register to vote and things like that. So Constitution Week is coming up here at KSU. I think it actually started late last week and it continues through this week. And we'll be, again, partnering with the Census Bureau to go out and use various opportunities that they've presented to us to get in front of students and inform them of the importance of the census. Okay, here's a little bit about what's going on currently with this whole, the, the bigger picture as far as the census is concerned. Right now, through about the middle and part of October, they'll be conducting what's called address canvassing. And that is basically a process where census workers go out into the field and they verify information that they've received previously from local governments by way of the LUCA process, which is the Local Update of Census Addresses process that Cobb County participates in regularly. So they'll go out in the field, they're easily identified with bags with the census logo, picture IDs and things like that. And, you know, if anybody ever sees them and wonders what they're doing, they're out verifying address information that they've already received from us. And we've also, we've already been alerted to some discrepancies that our GIS staff is currently working to help clarify. So that process will be going on through about the middle and October. In the meantime, we'll continue to collaborate with our partnership specialists at the Census Bureau and engage in our Complete Count Committee. Okay, I think that was, that was the music from our video, and I don't know exactly how that, even though that kind of sounded like a wrap it up box, didn't it? We'll, we'll have to skip on the video because of the technical issues, yeah. All right, I apologize. So again, continue collaboration with our partners. We've also engaged recently the newly formed State Complete Count Committee with Governor Kemp. Had some good conversations with those folks and are looking to collaborate with them on an activity, hopefully within the next four weeks or so. And again, like I said earlier, various community events, fairs, festivals, church events, and another planned event at Kennesaw State coming up in January. There's also a video on this slide, but because we've had issues with videos, we won't try it. And that's just the video that kind of explains the address canvassing process. So with that, I thank you for your time today, and if there are any questions, feel free.
Just an interesting fact someone shared with me that in 2010, Cobb County had what you would consider to be a good return rate of seventy-seven percent on the census. But that gap between seventy-seven percent and a hundred percent left two hundred and fifty million dollars off of the table that we could have gotten. So that made me realize just how critical it is for everybody to be counted because we are leaving serious money on the table that could help us be able to do a lot of good work here.
Absolutely, and, you know, a lot of that money is federally based and it's tied to a variety of federal programs. A lot of housing and urban developments programs are tied to census information, including community development block grants, free and reduced lunch and breakfast programs at school. A lot of that, that, that money gets allocated based on census responses and also other, you know, assistance programs like women, infants and children, temporary assistance for needy families. A lot of programs that people depend on are tied to census response rates. So again, it's very important. That's a good point.
I have a question for the young ladies that came with you.
Sure.
They may not be able to answer it, but I didn't want them to come all this way and just sit there. Yeah, listen to your music. Good morning, good afternoon. The census blocks, you know, that are kind of created, once the census count is done, do those get modified? I mean, the census blocks, are they, do they, do they try to divide people evenly among them? Or, I mean, what exactly is the purpose of a census block?
The census block, you're talking about the tracks?
Yeah, the tracks.
Well, actually, you all get to, to draw the lines.
Well, no, that draws the lines for like, you know, commissioners and representatives. I, I thought this, we don't draw the census, the, the tracks or the blocks or the.
Yeah, this is a GIS question, planning question.
I actually might be able to answer that. So the, the block groups and the tracks are generally a result of, you know, the responses because the idea is to try to create as close to equal distribution of population amongst the tracks as possible. And of course, it's not going to, you know, balance out entirely, but, you know, the idea is as close, as for as close to equal distribution.
So if you have an area that has had a lot of growth or development, say, for example, you know, the Cumberland Gallery area, because I know that there are some rather large census blocks in there. So those are going to change or they're going to get smaller?
It's quite possible that they will become smaller based on increased population density, yes.
Okay.
Is total population counted, or is it eighteen and over, or?
Total population.
Everybody in a household?
The sense, the, the purpose of the questionnaire is to find out the number of people living at each household. And again, it's based on the household and the address, not necessarily the names of the individuals. But yes, they, they, they want to know, the Census Bureau wants to know everyone who's living in a particular household.
I've already had someone come to my house.
Yeah, I did too. Now, what about college students? Do they get counted at where they're at school or where they live?
They get counted wherever they are on April first of 2020, and for most, that's at school.
Well, that's not good for Cobb. I mean, you want to talk about undercounting, that's going to leave a whole lot more, well, because a lot of the kids, if they're not.
Actually, it is good for Cobb, considering we have Kennesaw State. And so wherever they are, so if they're at Kennesaw State, that's where they'll be counted. Now, your students, if you happen to have children in college, they'll be counted where they are.
Well, I don't know if I want Alabama to get them.
I did want to talk about the low response rate. Cobb County has several low response rates that are estimates that are projected and is an indicator that there's a great chance that those people will not complete the census form when it comes out. So that, that's a potential of lost dollars in our community, and I say our because I live in Cobb. And so what we're doing is, through the Complete Count Committee, working together to figure out strategies on how those individuals or those people in those particular tracks can be counted, make them aware of the importance of them completing the form. And the census form is currently available, a sample form is currently available online. So we'll make sure that Jason gets a copy of that.
Considering how much money's on the table, I mean, are, do localities use third-party services to help count populations and reach those underserved areas?
Well, there are some, for example, you mentioned the city of Atlanta. They are not using a third-party service, but they did hire someone specifically to be responsible for helping to create an awareness and education. So she's, she's a champion, and she's creating ambassadors for the city of Atlanta to support the census effort for 2020. And the form, Ms. Joanne, that you receive is probably the American Community Survey, and that's an annual survey that's done. And that's just as important too, because it helps us to collect data on population and household incomes throughout the year on an annual basis. And it also helps us with regard to the calculation of that low response rate.
And the gentleman that came was just verifying the address and that I live there.
So that's address canvassing that we're talking about.
I didn't ask any other questions.
So I'm, I'm assuming you, you can map out where the response rates are in the county?
I'm sorry, say that again?
We can map out where the response rates are in the county?
We can map out our low response rates in the county, yes. We have that data, and we provided that data.
Well, I would think that there would be ways that we could address that issue. We have plenty of volunteer groups here. So I'll work with Jason on that.
Fantastic.
I'm willing to do it. Yeah, no problem.
It, it's not door to door, but we would certainly like to get people and volunteers involved with helping that Complete Count Committee that, that's, oh, he was being funny!
The Complete Count Committee, I, I'll think, I'll, I'll work with Jason on it, but I think, but there's plenty of opportunities here for groups doing community service. I know when I check into my Kiwanis group, they have a block, they have all the stuff I've done during the week. So I think we can harness community, you know, community programs like that here in the county to assist you. We just need to, you know, do a better job of collaborating with them. So we'll, we'll work on that for you.
Well, I also want to make sure that, that Jason sends you all the, the link to these videos because you have an opportunity to see what a great job the Complete Count Committee has done thus far. But we absolutely need your support, so it's glad to hear that you would, because you are the trusted voices of this community, and just to know that the community has your support adds great value to the overall process.
Okay.
So thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thanks for all you're doing.
Other questions?
Any other questions? Okay, thank you for coming today. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And with that, we're adjourned.